I'd like to call the board of education for Tuesday, October 16th to our please stand on the left. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda of the October 16th, 2018 regular reading as presented.
I have a motion and a second on favor by senior I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the approval of the consent agenda items.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on favor by senior I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have public participation. We'll move on to the report this superintendent.
Thank you. I'd like to start by saying happy bosses day. But seriously, I would like to say thank you very much to the board of governors for all they do. I know it's a lot of work and headache at times, but we appreciate all you do. You do have a note of appreciation in your packet. And the next thing on the item is to look at the enrollment count, the last Wednesday in September. This count is the one that we submit to DUCY and is the official count to kick off the school year. If you look at 5B, you'll see a comparison from 1998 all the way through this year. And if we're looking and comparing 1718 and 1819, we have seen an increase in enrollment, so we're pretty excited about that. So if you look at our first day count and you see first day of school estimates, if you look down that column, you'll see that the numbers there reflect that we had an estimate of 79 additional students in the district. The official count here in September, we actually had 69 additional students from last year at this time. So we were really excited about that. If you move to the next page, the second page of 5B, this breaks down by grade level. And so I took some time and did some comparison. And what we found, or what I found at Bloomsdale Elementary is that our enrollment is up 38 students. So we're pretty excited about that. The largest class at Bloomsdale has 62 students, and that is kindergarten where we put the additional kindergarten teacher this year. And then there were enrollment increases in grades one, two, three, and four. So we're happy to see the growth at that building. Enrollment at St. Jen Elementary is up 30 students. So I went through and I looked at every grade and there were increases comparing the numbers from last year. There were increases in every grade level there. Not a whole lot, it may be one or two students, but it's growth. At the middle school, we are down 21 students. And what happened there is they sent a large eighth grade class of 157 students on to the high school, and they gained a smaller sixth grade class of only 127 students. And then the seventh and eighth grade classes are kind of small too. So that accounts for the small decrease there. At the high school, the enrollment went up 22 students. The ninth grade class, as typical, is the largest class in the district right now. It has 173 students. And I was very pleased to see that the enrollment in the 11th grade class went up. I look forward to five. So typically, as classes move through, we lose them, but in that junior class, we actually gained some students. We're pretty happy about that. So as I said earlier, very pleased to see these increases. We're looking forward to working with our new families and providing a quality education for all of our students. Okay. Next to my report, I want to talk about, we have Veterans Day assemblies and celebrations coming up. So what I'm going to do is just do a quick overview of what's happening and then kind of give you a reference where to contact if anybody in the community has any questions. So principals, please help me if I get something wrong. So I'm going to start out at Bloomsdale Elementary. Their assembly will be on Tuesday, November 16th. Veterans are welcome to come to the cafeteria to check in and have donuts and coffee at 9:00 a.m. in that morning. The program will be in the gym, and that program starts at 9:30. And some of the highlights, the lead groups of students will be responsible for running the program, and all grades will perform patriotic songs. So I know they're very excited. The kids are very excited. Six? Tuesday, November 16th?
Yeah, I was.
16th. That's a big difference. So Tuesday, November 6th. Thank you. Okay, St. Jen Elementary. Their assembly is on Thursday, November 8th. At 8:15, veterans will check into the St. Jen R2 Performing Arts Center. At 8:30, students related to the veterans will join them at the pack to visit, have some photos taken, and kind of hang out with their veterans. At 9:00 a.m., the program will begin. Some of the highlights, the fifth grade will do the white table ceremony. And if you've never seen that, that's a beautiful ceremony. And there will be a whole school song, and they'll all sing "My Country, Tis of Me." So I'm anxious to see that. The middle school and high school, their assembly will be on Friday, November 19th at 12:30 in the Peggy J. Johnson Gymnasium concession area. I'm trying to rush through November 19th. Okay, November 9th at 12:30. Lunch will be served in the concession area of the Peggy J. Johnson Gymnasium. At 1:45, the assembly will begin. And really, all I've been told is that the broadcast class at the high school has been working on some really cool stuff that they're going to be showing at the assembly. So I'm excited to see that new stuff. But all veterans are welcome to attend and join us for these great celebrations. If anyone has questions, they should call the office in each building. And that number is 573-883-4500. And if you just listen for the extension to the building, and the secretaries will be able to direct you to your appropriate person if you have questions. So I'm going to recap to make sure I get my dates right. Bloomsdale is Tuesday, November 6th. St. Jen Elementary is Thursday, November 8th. And the middle school and high school is Friday, November 9th. Okay? Do you have any questions? We're really excited. These assemblies, I just love going to them. It is a great thing.
Absolutely.
Next up, we have principal reports. So who's going to go first? It doesn't matter. Do you mind, Mr. Resing, if we do the instructional program presentation and come back to the principal's report?
That's fine.
Okay. All right. We did instructional program presentation. And here with us tonight, we have Ms. Tabitha Zimmerman, who teaches German. This is Ingrid Macaskey, who teaches Spanish. And this is Brezal, who teaches French, will be running in soon.
Right, so this is the Spanish program. The levels are from one to four. And hopefully, perhaps, we might reach five, since we started with Spanish one in the middle school. I explain to my students every year that it is important to take languages so you can speak, you know, with other people from other cultures. But there's a research that says that taking a second language, or more than one language, helps you intellectually. And also helps you, as you get older, slow down all the things that might come with age, like dementia and Alzheimer's. So there's a lot of research about that. And since it's something so abstract to learn, so it pushes your brain a little bit further, and it helps in that sense. Spanish one, in the first level of Spanish, students learn the basic verbal communication, vocabulary. We have thematic units and grammar. The classes have culture units. They, students, have to do at least one research project, but I have set two. One, a family tree in the first semester. And then they have to do a research project on a Spanish speaker, the biography of a Spanish speaker. And like I said earlier, Spanish one has been offered to the middle schoolers. And it's being divided into two semesters. The first semester, they call it Spanish one, and the second one, they call it Spanish two. But it's just the continuation of Spanish one. And the difficulty is exactly the same, the requirements are exactly the same as the ones that we have in high school. For Spanish two, we continue with grammar, thematic vocabulary, and culture units. They do have also a research project, which is planning a trip to a Spanish-speaking country. And this is important, by the end of the year, the students should be at a level equivalent to the first semester in a university. So we need to get there. On level third and fourth, Spanish will have more complex pretenses, thematic vocabulary, and grammar. And they're also introduced to literature in Spanish course. And they have also more culture. At the end of the third year, students should be at a level equivalent to the second semester in a university. So we have to really go up to there. At the end of the fourth year, students should be at a level equivalent to the first semester at the university. They also have research projects. For the third, Spanish three, they have to do some research on a food on any of the Spanish-speaking countries. There are about 23 Spanish-speaking countries. And they have to create a cooking show, like a TV cooking show. And they have to, of course, do all the steps and film themselves cooking, actually. And this, last year, the students went ahead and they wanted to reach the goal for community. And so in order to do that, they invited, so everybody's cooking. And then in order to reach that community goal, they invited their parents and family to one of the homes of the students doing the cooking in order to serve them the food, so they could appreciate other cultures. So that was very interesting, and they filmed that as well. Okay, technology. Technology, I use technology because we have to retain a lot of information regarding vocabulary, grammatical structures and all that. But I use a lot of technology. And some of the things that we use in order to retain information would be choose a wisdom, but for some reason, it was blocked this year. Quit sleep, life, cahoot, et passo, padlet, everything that is out there, I use it. And I spend a lot of time in the afternoons after school doing research on how to use them, so to be more effective. They also use a technology in order to create with a language. They use things like flip grid, for some reason, I have no idea why they love doing that. Duolingo, seesaw, storybook, in order to create short stories, length, parallelize. You can see a whole array of things that they use in technology. Although we have a book, it's called El Español, it's a total español series. We use a lot of just teacher-created, my own teacher-created lessons. The book is more like a scope and sequence of everything, so they can have, they know where we are at. But there's a lot of interactive, what I call the interactive Ingrid's ebook and the hybrid docs. So they use that. I managed to also teach myself how to use the virtual reality, things that some of the teachers in middle school have been using. They were kind enough to let me do that. So I finally, last year, came up with a lesson on earthquakes that happened, have happened in Mexico. So they also were exposed to virtual reality. And the whole lesson, of course, is done in Spanish. So we do all the questions, and they do all the activities in Spanish while they use their cardboard. Here has a little bit of a clip on how the kids are cooking at home, and then eventually they invite their families. Another thing that we did using the monopad and the Google Hangouts, we were able to talk to some students in Mexico. So we can really see how much they know and how they can use the language. So either even the kids from Mexico, as well as the kids from the high school, were extremely excited about the chance that we gave them of communicating in real life. Spanish three and four, I started asking them to create, besides the research projects, I'm very interested in portfolios. I have noticed that there is a lot of increase in the companies that they're hiring these people. They don't ask for your typical resume, they ask for your working portfolio, where you actually show what you can do, not just writing, I can do this and that, just show me how you do it. So we work on commercial portfolios, and they can use any format that they want to, that they feel more comfortable with. This is super important. We are connected to SLU 1818 programs, so they can earn up to nine hours of college credit through my classes in Spanish three, three hours in Spanish three, and six hours when they are taking Spanish four. We do have a Spanish club that connects the kids to the community. We have two programs that we participate, every year, shop with a cop and annual Christmas toy drive. And that's about it. Do you have any questions?
All right, so I'm the new teacher from last time. So hi, so Frau Zimmermann, I'm Ms. Zimmerman, and I teach the German classes here. It's my Twitter handle, if you guys want to follow my classes reviewing, @FrauZimmer. So I'm really excited about the grammar. I know that the kids don't like the grammar as much, but I love teaching grammar. So I teach a lot in German one about verbs, gender of nouns, and then word order, which is my favorite thing. But I know that they don't really care about this as much. They care more about the vocab, the culture, and then the food. So vocab-wise, they learn about their families, they learn hobbies. So that one's always a fun one, because I'll take them outside with chalk, and they draw what they like to do, then they conjugate the verb, and then they have to create sentences about their hobbies. So that's kind of a hands-on activity that we do. They learn about school and compare it to the U.S. versus Germany, what the school system's like. They do a big weather project where they have to record themselves, pretending that they're the weather person. And there's always some wild presentations, but it's fun. Then they talk about and learn about languages and neighboring countries' clothing and food. So their favorite one, that my current German one continues to talk about every single week, and I keep reminding them it's not till February, is we do a taste test. So I go and I get a bunch of German food, and then they get to try German snacks and figure out what they like and what they don't like. And that one's probably my favorite one, especially when I take photos of the gross faces that they have. So that's German one. German two, we continue on with more grammar, which again, I love, but they hate. We go from present tense verbs to then past tense, which sometimes is difficult for them because it's so much at once. We also go more in-depth with cases, so from subject to direct object to indirect, and then the possessive case. We talk about how this is good, better, best, comparative and superlatives, and then adjectives. And then culture and vocab, they talk about birthdays, celebrations, and then at home, and then a lot of travel, which gets them excited about the potential travel bug of going to the airport, camping, going to these hostels, and hotels. And then for my advanced German, it's a combined class. And so what I do, because I think that it best fits the students' needs, is I switch the curriculum every year so that they can have my undivided attention in that class. So for the most part, in German one and two, they will have learned all the basics to where if I threw them into Germany, they could say the basic things, like where's the restroom, how much does this cost? But then in advanced German, we start going back and forth with this. And even though I switch the curriculum, it's not really something that, oh, they're really struggling if they don't have this in the opposite year. We do a lot of review as well, and if at any given year, they say, Ms. Zimmerman, I'm struggling with this, then we will take a pause as a class and go back and review something. So we do still do grammar, but then I will say that we're a lot more higher up with the applications. So they'll learn things about the environment, careers, and how they can compare that to being in Germany and having a potential career in a German-speaking country. And then the fun things that they like, like popular music, poetry a little bit. They like learning about the Berlin Wall, and then we do a Holocaust unit in depth. To the point where if they are in German four, they basically have a capstone project that they will present at the end of the year, similar to college, to kind of get their feet wet and think, do I want to continue on with college? Continue on with German in college. As far as everything, I do use technology in the classroom, but I also love using hands-on things, getting them moving, getting them active. So one of the things that they enjoy doing, yes, I brought things, I hope that's okay. One of the things that I will do is dominoes. And so they lay out on the ground, and they have to match a picture or a sentence to the verb and apply it a little bit more. So that's what these things are, and that's what Annie was doing in that picture. When they're learning sentence structure, I'll write all these flashcards and make every single person stand up in line, and then they have to readjust sentences in different ways. And they like it. I like it when they stand up. They get annoyed at first, but they'll get over it. They do a lot of station work. Again, I don't like them sitting for too long. So they get up and they move, and they have a time limit to do it, just that way they're focused in that time. And for my antsy kids, then they can, you know, get it done and then move on to the next task. And then here is what I call word wraps, which is my pride and joy. So when I was in elementary school, I loved the math wraps, where you had to find the solution. And so they have to match the subject to the verb conjugation properly, and so they get to do that. We also have a board game. It's called Die Schnecke, which is a snail. And so they have to compete and then learn how to conjugate the verb properly, and then they move the piece further. And then the one that wins gets excited, and they just get bragging rights, which they get very excited about that. We also, I know that I haven't been the best in the past with making sure that I pause for cultural things, so that's one thing that I'm really trying to do. And so this year, we paused for Oktoberfest, and they learned a wonderful Bavarian folk dance.
I don't know. This is great. The French and the German, it's okay.
But they got to stand in the senior tea and learn a Bavarian folk dance, and this class was the most excited about it. I might have ragged them with root beer, but they were really excited about it. And so they learned the Bavarian folk dance, and then they learned some songs and things like that. So I try and include some of the culture stuff. And then the big thing that I started doing near the end of last year is I do German Thursdays. Because according to actual standards, we're supposed to speak at least 20% in the foreign language at all times. And that doesn't always happen, especially in level one, when they keep constantly saying, what are you saying? I don't know what you're saying, just speak English. So I set aside Thursdays. Every Thursday, they know that it's German Thursdays. Right now, the expectation is that I speak 100% in German. They can continue saying, I don't understand what you're saying. But then next semester, they will have to start participating a little bit more by speaking in German. And so with that, on German Thursdays, I've also created a goal of the month, so a communicative standard. Every month, at the beginning of the month, I tell them, okay, this month, our goal is reading. And on our Thursdays, then we will practice reading activities. This month, our goal was speaking activities. And so this is my German three and four. I divided them into groups, and I said, you have 30 minutes to create a skit, whatever topic you want, as long as it's school-appropriate, and then you perform it in 30 minutes. And they did, they loved it. I thought it was going to be a flop, but they absolutely loved it. I'm sure you won't understand what they're saying, but with this group, you can see how they got into it in their level of communication. And so they just, they absolutely loved it, which shocked me, because I thought it was going to be like pulling teeth to get them to do that. And then with the goal of the month, at the end of the month, I do give them a quiz of some sort. They know that as long as they're putting their best effort into it, they will not get a grade for it. I just want them to know that when we do it again in six months, that they can say, I showed growth. If they start messing around and don't put any effort into it, I have told them that it will then go in as a grade. But it's just a way for them to see, okay, if I get thrown into Germany, I could survive and I could handle speaking that language. So that's all I've got. Do you have any questions?
Oh, dear, you brought the tear up. Oh, my gosh. That's okay. That was my take earlier. Thank you. So sorry, I snuck in here a little bit late, doing a little bit of juggling tonight, and we've got a debate meeting going on, so I was putting that on. All right, let's see. So I am Brezal, I'm the French teacher here, been here for a few years. We don't need to go into that. And I teach French one through four. I'm very excited, though, because in two years, I will teach French five. So I don't know if they talked a little bit about that, but it makes me very excited. So French one, and it's very similar to the first level of the other two languages. We have a linguistic study of foundational ideas, grammar, like what are verbs? We're learning about verbs this week in French one, and it's a scary thing, but they're excited because they can, many of them have noticed they can identify them. So that's kind of cute. And we have a thematic vocabulary. So they do all kinds of projects. This was a family tree done a couple of years ago. And she actually did her real family. I gave them the option of choosing a different family, or some of them get excited with cartoons. It's kind of cute. And we also include sociocultural and geographic units, because French is spoken on five continents. So in my classroom, I have flags and maps of countries hanging from the ceiling representing all the places in the world where French is spoken. And that's kind of fun, because when we learn about something new, I'm like, it's hanging over there. And then the focus for all of us is on interpersonal communication and actual can-do statements. Let's see, had trouble pulling this up earlier. But basically, the American Council for the Teaching of Foreign Languages has come up with a list of what students should be able to do at each level. Not at each level as in the first year, second year, but each level that they are actually at. So novice, intermediate, and then there's levels within each of those levels. So the can-do statements are pretty neat. They describe what learners can do over a period of time. They help them set goals and see where they are and where they need to be. I have these posted in my classroom so that the students feel like, oh, I'm more on goal than I thought. Because many times, people think that they can start a foreign language and be fluent within a year, which is not exactly a realistic goal. So it's kind of nice to be able to help them come up with it. So it's, it's kind of nice to be able to help them compare how they are doing. These are some of the places where French is spoken. Kind of cool. Uh, my French two students, by the way, are, let's see, there we go. Are now corresponding with a group of French students in Senegal where they speak French. And my French one students are corresponding written letters with a group of students in France. So that's kind of fun. Um, in French two, we continue to learn different thematic units. This is kind of fun because I give them projects to do like shows how to cook things. And it's a cooking show in French.
Bonjour. Je me permets un petit projet. Ces, ces passés des verres, hein?
Oui, c'est triste de le.
Qu'est-ce que il y a d'assez?
So they, they actually put on the whole show and made the whole item. It was really cute. I had to save it. Second semester, French two students will spend time going back and forth between the textbook lessons and actually planning a virtual vacation in Paris. So it's pretty intricate. They have to do quite a few things. They create a scrapbook of this trip in French. And it's a really neat unit because they figure out how to plan their trip overseas and how to find a hotel or apartment and rent it. And so it's kind of neat. And then the focus is of course on interpersonal communication. They, we do a lot of speaking activities in French two. We, they have lots of time that they're given guided activities as well as like just sort of, here's what person A is supposed to say in English and you have to figure out how to do in French. And so it's, it's really neat and I enjoy watching them grow. It's, it's really cool. The next level is the first level that students can earn eighteen, eighteen credits through Saint Louis University. And this year is our first year of having sophomores in it. And so I got to help guide them through the process of enrolling at Saint Louis University and that was interesting. For me as well as for them, because that was the first time I had done it. And so there are like all the things that you have to fill out. Misses, oh, what do we put here? I'm like, ah. That thing. They go a little bit deeper into the grammar, so they learn future tense and different past tenses. And so they're able to express themselves in a little bit more fully. They sound a little more academic, but I tell them, you're still, you're still like fourth, fifth grade, so don't feel bad, okay? Second, the first semester at the end, we actually do a specific country study of a country, a former French colony in Africa. And they create a, uh, an electronic portfolio. So all of the slides are linked to this particular slide. And then so you can just see that and you have to be able to go back to that actual slide. I'm not presenting. So it's, it's really cool and I present it to the class using their French. And so it's, it's a really neat kind of project. And then during the fourth quarter of French three, they read their first French novel, The Le Petit Prince, which is one of my favorite books in the whole world and it's probably good because I've taught it for a few years. And um, but it's, it's a lot of fun and the kids realize, oh my gosh, I can't read a book in French. So we do that. We do that in class. And that's a lot of, it's really neat. And then French four, um, students again can earn credit through Saint Louis University. And in the first semester, we study a, for about four weeks, three and a half, four weeks, a key historical era in France. And so I switch this back and forth, French three and four in the same class. And even though French three is not learning what French four learns, I feel like they don't probably want to hear the same thing two years in a row. So every other year and even years, it is World War Two. Oops, go back. And so that's what we're going to do this year. And in odd years, it's the Enlightenment. So a little bit different, but it also plays into what we do in the second semester. We spend the fourth quarter reading either a novel, Voltaire's Cendy, in years that we've studied the Enlightenment, or a play, Ionescu's Vinoceos, when we studied World War Two. And then last but not least, we do have French Club and, okay, so I can show you. I'm sorry. Look at this. Okay, close your eyes. There we go. French Club, okay. But now all the rest of them will work. Okay, so French Club helps support French culture and language in our community. Um, we do lots of fun stuff. The kids do this, by the way. They, they, they think the Eiffel Tower is a Christmas tree, but it's cool. And this is our first group of French students that came to stay for two weeks. We have our third group of French students that is here right now. Um, and this is their second day. It's the, the school and their third day in the country. And two of them got to stay and watch the debate meet and they're, it was really kind of cool watching their reactions. And then we participated in the Christmas walk. Students are very brave and they dress up and they go in and they come, I have to go with them, otherwise they wouldn't show up, I'm pretty sure. And, and we sing Christmas carols in French and I'm not sure who we entertain, but I'm entertained. And aren't they cute? That was actually kind of a warm year. That was nice. And then, um, we've attended the King's Ball. Um, one of our students was actually crowned a couple of years ago. That was kind of fun. She was like, oh, she won. Okay. And then, and she created. And we've had, we've helped in June at la fête de la Nouvelle France. And um, so there we are dressed up. We did, we did a fashion show that year. That was interesting. And we also support, the, the French Club also supports our classes as we go to different places. This is Chicago a couple of years ago. Um, and uh, I don't know how she survived in short sleeves because I'm pretty sure that was November. But um, we, we travel all over the place to learn about French connections in different places. I think this is when we went to go see The Phantom of the Opera, so. All right, so there we go. I'm going to close all these little X out. Thank you very much. Any questions?
No, thank you.
That's my, you want my email?
No, I want this right here.
Oh, there we go.
Guys, done a great job.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so at Bloomstown Elementary, we've been extremely busy and um, looking at these teachers talking about what they do every day. I could stand up here for three hours talking about everything that happens in the buildings. It's amazing how hard they work out they do. But something we've been focusing on is our action teams with Leader and Me. Leader and Me is um, kind of like a tiered process, like you have the principal, you have the line house coordinator, you have line house team, and the teacher action teams. They have been extremely busy and something they're working on right now is Emily Schlierer, Rowing for Delmire's Shoes, for our little courtyard area right there. And um, it was for like twenty-eight hundred dollars and we got about seven hundred dollars just out in public and then wholesome agreed to pay for the rest. So that's exciting. They're gonna have tiered seating out there, they're gonna have patio furniture, um, shade out there. It's just always been like this wasted space out there. So that's pictures of all the boxes of all the stuff that we're getting in right now and we have to put all together. And then our PTO built an outside classroom. They just finished it this weekend. It is amazing. It's got like a concrete floor, um, it's really durable. It will last a really long time. It has a roof. They're planning on putting a whiteboard up there so the teachers can teach outside. It has seating all around and those are flower beds that are gonna be put around the outside edge. Um, that's the family, uh, learning environment. We're working on the learning environment. And then Family Involvement Action Team, they are sending home the habits every month. And they're having the kids teach the habits to their parents and there's activities on those sheets. And then the kids bring those back. And there's a bulletin board that says Leadership Follow Us Home. And they get to put their family name up there and if they get so many months out of the year, they get to be honorary leadership families. And we are having a ceremony for them at the end of the year, so that's exciting. Then our student learning and leading is like our lead roles that we're doing. And our academic alignment team is now, um, I think it's the next one. Is Incorporated Leadership Notebooks. And this is where the kids get to own their own learning and um, leading. And the teachers are modeling right now goals for their self and those are some tracking sheets that our teachers are modeling. Kim Rat, her goal was to run a mile faster than, I don't know, eight minutes or something. I don't even know what you run a mile in. But that's her sheet right there. But she's been running with her P P class. And that date that's orange, she actually beat everybody and she reached her goal. And her whole class was super excited to see that she did it with them. And then kindergarten, they're all setting their own goals. It's things like learning how to tie your shoes, learning how to um, make new friends, things like that. So it's exciting that they're doing that. And then down in the corner is a third grade student that has decorated her own binder and is making it her own. So that's what we're working on now until Christmas. Is just getting our whole leading and learning binder, binders together and making them feel ownership and using it every day. And then we had a awesome talent show, which we have every year. We had Dr. Mercer and Christie Clark and um, Mr. French. He's a grandparent of a couple of our students, were the judges this year and they did an amazing job. And the kids, it's always amazing. I think we had about thirty-five acts. So um, those are our winners at the K three and then our winners at the four or five. And then during our lead time, we're trying to bring in people that have become leaders in the community, that have went to school here. And we brought in Emily Hills Camp and she did an amazing job because she put together a whole PowerPoint about her leadership and rowing and how it ties to the seven habits. And she was really good with kids. She brought them up and they volunteered. Like they have the little rowing um, gear there and they put their gear on and um, she talked about how it's important to be, to try and be part of the team. Like she talked about when she ran, she was like, I wasn't really a good runner, but I was part of the team and that's why it made me a better part of the team for the rowing. So it was really funny. The kids enjoyed it. And that's it at Bloomstown.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, we just, both Lori and I had a teacher's night tonight, her and Bloomstown McDonald's and myself here in town. And so um, it was really great. We wanted to say thanks for all bringing that up to us and the family's really, really good tonight. All right, so it's St. Louis Elementary, like all buildings, busy, busy. Um, I just put a couple of slides in today that every year, Chris Overly and Dorothy Roman take it upon themselves to give back. You know, they were in our building for so many years and they bring mums up and put pumpkins out. And it just always makes the building look so pretty in the fall. So um, there's our annual fall look and of course, we have our leadership signs out front that we made with the kids. Um, also our secretaries take it upon themselves to decorate the office every month. So this year, of course, for this month, we've got Halloween. Okay, so a few things going on in our building in the last little bit. Um, up in the upper right-hand corner, the fifth grade students do lots and lots of hands-on science experiments. Just about every time I'm out in that hallway, they are measuring or doing something with the scientific method, taking a lot of data and really learning how to get ready to do experiments. And I, I've seen over time how the kids at the middle schools, experiments keep getting more and more complex. And you know, I really feel like that our fourth and fifth grade teachers help really get revved up for that. So in the bottom corner, Mrs. Jenkins, this happens to be Mrs. Jenkins' classroom, but several of the rooms do this too. The kids have an opportunity at the end of the week to synthesize their learning and stand up and create a piece about what their favorite part of, of like whatever they learned this week. This happened to be math and they get to kind of show some examples and do some teaching to the class. So um, in the middle thing, in the middle picture, we had a great family fun night in October. It was for pre-K through second and it was called an author event. And we had some stats here. We had a great turnout. We had uh, three hundred and twenty-nine parents and kids come for those four grade levels and so that was ninety-five families. So we did an author study and every grade level picked an author or a series of authors and focused on it. So pre-K, pre-K did, if you give a cat a cupcake and they had baked cupcakes and the families got to decorate and do that. Uh, kindergarten did, if you give a mouse a cookie and they had all cookie and mathematics type centers. First grade did all the Eric Carle books and um, focused on all the Eric Carle, Hungry Caterpillar, Grudge and Ladybug, that whole series. And then second grade did Chrysanthemum and they planted seeds. So we had little pink flower pots for October and we just had a really good turnout. I unfortunately missed it. I was in Kansas City welcoming my granddaughter into the world. But they did a great job and I'm sorry I missed it, but I was doing something different then. In the upper right-hand corner, um, it was Bring a Teddy Bear to School National, to Brand Teddy Bears School Week. And so all the first graders had those bears all week long and they taught those bears a lot of stuff that week. And in the bottom corner, we can see some first graders using our AV Rover. We really like the AV Rover. Um, we use it mostly for science, I'd say. This was a simple machine unit that Mrs. Anshler was doing with her kids. But um, we keep trying to put that rover to work, so. Um, are some student leaders that stood out this month for us. Um, up in the upper right-hand corner, we have Michael Radlitt and in the bottom corner, Damon Shilly. And we have Tommy Key and Vera Rudler. So all four of these kids were nominated for outstanding, above and beyond citizenships and acts of kindness, so. We know one of those. And in the middle, it are our student of the month. So as always, we celebrate these kids with a special lunchtime with them and a special celebration. So fall things that we've done in the last few weeks, up in the upper right-hand corner, you can see some little girls made some caterpillars there, Eric Carle Hungry Caterpillars at Family Fun Night out of grapes and marshmallows, I believe. Uh, bottom corner, the kindergartners continued their, this year, their trip to Efforts and came home with some apples. And then you can see they made applesauce. They always make applesauce and all kind of goodies with their apples. Up in the other, on the right-hand side, both kindergarten and first grade last week did a lot of work with the fire department. I remember thank our local fire department. They spend a lot of time coming up to help us. They came, they come to visit the school and uh, show, bring the smokehouse and spray the water hoses. And it's all really very exciting and they come to us for the kindergarten. Then our first graders actually travel out to the fire department and get to tour the fire department. So it's really meaningful time for them. Also, of course, you gotta love homecoming, right? We love homecoming last week and we got to go to the high school for our big assembly. Thanks, Mr. Haney. I, we can't really fit in our gym anymore and it is very exciting to go to the high schools. We had a great time at the high school and the cheerleaders and the band and the Emeralds did a great job. They never disappoint. And our special little gal there in the middle, Mackenzie Knight, last month when I was here, I just happened to mention that she was going to be on there, I think the next day or the following day, for Doing the Right Thing. So there she is up in St. Louis and she's our hero. So also in the bottom left-hand corner, Taylor Matthews, the only queen, happens to be a cadet in our building. So we got a picture of her last Friday with Mrs. Yanis' class. And then a few more odds in it is going on. Um, I had looked at Lori's slides, so I didn't put too many of those similar things in. But like Lori, we are working on the three pillars of Leader and Me are culture, um, culture, leadership and academics. So our students too are working on their academic, on their leadership binders and setting goals. And that happens to be a group of first graders who have a, their writing spree goals and they all had And they all had made their goals and they were putting their stars up on their leadership board there. And it was so cute. I just happened to see them putting their stars up. So they're setting goals, both personal and academic. And the binder is divided into five different sections. So right now, we're mostly focusing on those first initial pieces, all about me, really identifying who, who I am and, and what I can contribute and, and grow with and then setting goals. So we also had some other awesome things coming, going on. Dr. Lloyd and his team came in. You might remember he was our friend of education last year. And he and his team do a great job coming in, doing the varnish. Mrs. Fritsch, oh, like, I just pulled her name wrong. I hope I didn't. Anyway, Mrs. Fritsch has been working super great things with both Lori's teachers in mind. She's had a math training, had or is happening very soon, a collaborative math day, where she works with the teachers on best practices. And so much wonderful number sense, hands-on, problem solving. Math looks so different than it used to. We have loved Mrs. Fritsch for, for taking us far places. Lots of vision screening going on in our building last week. We completed our interview testing in grades two and four. Our behavior intervention program is often running down in our carpeted hallway. And like Lori, we're working on that leadership. That's about it.
Well, just like the other buildings, we've had some pretty busy weeks lately. Um, culminating last week with homecoming week. Uh, and in particular, a really great assembly on Friday. Um, that was almost entirely student-led. Uh, and we're really proud of what those guys were able to accomplish and, and want to recognize our spirit club, the students that show spirit club as their lead group. And their sponsors, Mrs. Huffman, uh, Mrs. Keenall, Mrs. Meyer and Mr. Samples. They did an amazing job, went all out for the assembly and we had everything. We had music, we had games, but we shaved a few heads. We were, we were lucky enough to get the high school cheerleaders and emeralds to come to our assembly too. And they did a great job. So thanks to those guys and gals for their help and, and their coaches as well. And it was just a really good positive, positive week in which we got to show some spirit. As you can see, the, uh, the old Twitter feed is alive and well. Um, as I took this screenshot, the, the particular tweet that popped up was in regard to the student council flamingos. And I understand we may have a few victims in this room who have already been blocked. We thank you for participating. We thank you even more for your money. And, but I, I, I was also, um, I was also tickled that this was the, the one that I happened to capture because I want to take a minute to brag on our student council. Uh, this was their project. And our student council is really coming into its own this year. Um, Mrs. Merzlove and Mrs. Jokers came to Dr. Taylor last year with a vision for what they thought student council could be. And in particular, uh, this crazy idea of hosting a leadership summit right here at St. Genevieve Middle School. So they invited all of the conference schools with student councils to bring their kids in. And they, they spent the day, uh, learning about leadership, talking about ideas, um, exchanging, you know, what are you doing at your school and what are some things that are working? Had a motivational speaker, came in, served lunch and it, it went off without a hitch. It was amazing. Those ladies did a great job of planning and the students did a good job of, of working on that and preparing for it. And Dr. Di, Dr. Taylor did a great job of facilitating that with a lot of vision all the way back, reaching back into last year in order to get ready for this year. So I want to take a minute to brag on student council. They're doing a great job. Um, as you can see, we've had a ton of positive office referrals. That's, that's one thing that we've really been trying to promote, uh, in our discussions. And again, in the bulletin that I send out each week is that we need to take a minute to celebrate awesomeness whenever we can. And as you can see, we've got quite a list going here. Uh, these are the ones that have been referred since, uh, our last meeting when I got to share some things with you. Um, and this time there were, there were too many for me to pop up pictures with all of them. But we think that they, they deserve their due credit as well. We're extremely proud of these guys. And there's a wide range of things this month, uh, for which those students were, were referred to the office. Um, things like just turning their academics around and, and having the right attitude about school and, and getting themselves focused again. Uh, students who have stopped to help other students in need. Students who go out of their way to make sure that the cafeteria is, is neat and in order for the next lunch shift. Um, particularly when we're getting ready to head things over to high school. We want to make sure that they've got a clean, fresh cafeteria they come into as well. Students helping out at football games in the same manner, making sure that the bleachers are cleaned up. Just, uh, like, like I said, it's a, it's a wide range, but we're very proud of these students and, and thank them for showing the character that they have. Just today, we named our spotlight award winner for this month. Uh, it is Mr. Mueller, uh, for a lot of reasons. And you can see some of the positive comments that were given to us by his fellow teachers. Ryan was dedicated to his kids, his M.S. family and his S.G. friends. He pours his heart and soul into S.G.R. two. And one person said, "I'm so glad they didn't shave your eyebrows." And I gotta tell you, there was a minute there.
Oh, yeah.
And I thought we might be losing some eyebrows.
Wasn't there a chant?
Yes, yes. There was a chant. There was a strong chant, a strong vociferous chant. Shave the brows. We didn't, we didn't lose any eyebrows. I was the fun squisher. But, but Ryan has been a wonderful addition, uh, to St. Genevieve Middle School. His, he's, he's got the biggest, greatest heart, uh, of anybody. And his, his personality fits in exactly right. He cares about those kids. He has a great sense of humor and he gives, 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 gives and gives. Uh, he volunteers in a lot of different ways beyond what's going on in the classroom. Um, and I'm very fortunate that I get to work with him in the rock band lead group. And when I see him instructing these kids on drums, it's amazing to me not only what he teaches them, but how he teaches them. So we're, we're very thankful to have Ryan and very proud of him and want to congratulate him on that great honor that his, his own coworkers bestowed upon him. Uh, some additional highlights from the past month. Uh, again, the student council leadership day, I've already touched on that. Eighth grade volleyball finished up their season, I believe, with a ten-and-three record, winning the conference title. Eighth grade football also won their conference title. So congratulations to all those students and their coaches. Uh, behind the scenes, uh, the teachers and I have been putting some work into the building goals. Um, not necessarily a rewrite, but a reorganization of some of those things and how that we choose to look at those. Uh, and we'll give you some more information on that as it develops. And I also wanted to tell you that attendance is still holding up very nicely, uh, around ninety-seven point three percent. Eighth graders are still winning, um, but the difference between first place and third place is only fourteen hundredths of a point. So it's, it's a tight race right now, but the eighth graders are still winning. Thank you very much for your time.
We, uh, as with everybody else, our big thing over the past couple of weeks too is, yeah. Homecoming and you'll see some of those images fly throughout here. You know, one of the things that I remind staff of, and I think they do an amazing job with, is homecoming week just needs to be fun. It's a time where we're going to get a little bit done academically, but we're going to get a lot done culturally and we need to take advantage of that. And, um, I'll talk a little bit more about that as I actually get to the homecoming stuff. Uh, I want to start with the FFA. They had a pretty big month. They were down at the SEMA District Fair. Uh, there you'll see in the lower left, Leo Gang took second place in the, um, the tractor rodeo. And I received several pictures from that. And I never realized just how sort of almost competitive and, and I don't want to say demolition derby because they don't intend to tear up the tractors. But inevitably, I think in the maneuvers and stuff they have performed, it's simply amazing. Um, up in the upper left, I thought this was just a great shot. It's nine hundred and fifty-six mums that the, uh, FFA sold and that gets. And, uh, just to see them all there, it was pretty impressive. That might even be where, uh, elementary schools came from. Whoa, I want to go back to FFA, but I don't want to play with trying to get us back there. I also wanted to say a special thank you to Hannah Fruchidanzi. She does an amazing job with that program. Kelly Sikowski this year, uh, both as counselor and with that program. They do amazing work with those young men and women, getting them prepared, representing our school and just doing little things throughout the community that a lot of times we don't even realize take place. Over welding bleachers and doing things like that and doing a little bit of landscaping here and there as necessary. And, uh, also I'm pleased to say that Hannah is on maternity, I believe, as of now. And I believe as of, uh, Thursday of next week, where we'll all have parentage conferences, she'll be having their second child. So, uh, my thoughts are with her. She's an amazing person. She'll be amazing for short-term if she's out. Um, I wanted to go ahead and cover our Rotary and Hops again. I know I don't always get to do those. No. Maybe, can I, oh, I can come back. Look at that. Joey Moppler, if you haven't had the opportunity to meet Joey, he is, as you can tell, a very happy young man. He's just an interesting individual and I love him to death. I put on there his class awards earned because I think it's very interesting when you think about brain and brain research, C.P., biology and physics. And I mean, that shows you just the talent on both sides, that he's an organic thinker and analytic thinker. Uh, he was, attended the Hugh Ryan Youth Leadership, was nominated for Missouri Boys State. Of course Rotary, we had Jane De Bowman and Jane kind of got caught in a dilemma this time around, handled it beautifully. Um, her original Rotary date was missed. She actually got to attend today. So she was sort of the featured guest today. And, uh, that led to a change with Rotary that I'll talk about here in just a minute. But the impressive thing above all else with her, I think, for FCC LA, attended the state competition four years and has earned the gold award each time. And she had the opportunity to attend the national competition, was awarded silver award. And that's insanely impressive. Um, the piece about Rotary that I want to talk about, we've kind of made a decision and I cleared it today with Dr. Fleet. Mr. Toons really kind of came up with this and I thought, what a fantastic idea. Normally the senior counselor attends Rotary with the student. And, uh, this has been a practice for a long time. You know, as you change staff, you get different perspectives on things. So what we're going to start doing at the high school is, uh, we're going to allow the Rotary student to pick a teacher of recognition that has impacted them, K-12, that's in our district. And that individual will attend the lunch with them. So, um, starting with the next Rotary student, they will actually get to pick a teacher of honor. And we're, we're opening that up. So I hope you all are prepared for that because I think they didn't know that. And I said, "Hey, I'm going to bring up something in this meeting that y'all aren't aware of yet." Because I was supposed to talk about it in a minute meeting. But, uh, so we're going to start featuring a teacher. You know, to show you this community support we have, we weren't really sure how Rotary would take that. Uh, Jane Dury took it to the board today and of course she's amazing. She took it to them and they thought it was absolutely fantastic. Because the interesting piece and the perspective that we gained is our students go there and they often talk about the staff that it packs them. So for years Rotary has gotten these names, but they often don't know the people. So this will give them an opportunity to start getting to know some of those people as well. So I hope to be reporting back next month on the first one and how it went. And hopefully it went well. Uh, of course, we have our Hall of Fame and, and I would be remiss if I did not mention Herb Follett and Rick Boyer, both were able to attend this year. Um, Herb for his service to community and Rick for, uh, his music performance and his ability. They're both incredible gentlemen. And I will tell you, one of the absolute sincere privileges that I get is getting to spend some time with our Hall of Fame executives every year. You really want to feel the dragon spirit. You really want to feel the impact that our building has on the community and our students and our staff. Talk to them. Talk to them going before the running of the halls. Talk to them after the running of the halls. The perspective that they will give you on hall incredible, um, it is, it's really neat. One of the people that I interviewed this past week for an assist control, I think really kind of summed up the position of the Hall of Famers the best. She said that the engagement by the students and the staff is something that as a former student, she's insanely jealous of because she never had it. And that seems to be the theme of what you hear from the Hall of Famers when they come back and see our facilities, our students, our staff and the way they interact. So again, congratulations to Herb and Rick and, uh, to Mr. Bowe and the entire Hall of Fame committee for the excellent job they did and not only putting that together, but continuing with it. And of course, we had homecoming two thousand and eighteen. Um, the obvious, the, um, I believe Ms. Beazell already did the spoiler lurk with our queen, Taylor Matthews. It's all right. You have the picture. I have the one in the lower left. Uh, King was Devon Bader. Flute winners were the seniors, class of two thousand and nineteen. But our water puff winners were the juniors, class of two thousand and twenty. Uh, again, an amazing week, a fun week. I want to say something about our flut building. One of the things, one of the things that I, uh, chuckles from a dad, no doubt. One of the things that I hear over and over, and it really is something that I take a lot of pride in for our staff and our students, is getting to travel and see other homecomings in football every year. Just the energy and the effort that's put into our flutes and representing our school. I always say year in and year out, our worst flut would win most schools' best. And they are insanely incredible. So a huge thank you, I'll see if I can remember all this, to Mrs. Bowman, Mrs. Stafford, um, Dr. Roke, Dr. Ederton, Mr. Keeker, Ms. Zimmerman, uh, Mrs. White, Wayne Weiner. I'll get that out eventually, Mrs. Weiner. And Mr. Crichton. Those are all of our class sponsors and who give of the time for a week, two weeks going into this. And of course, our parents. I say time and time again, we have great kids because we have great parents and the support that they show. On the, uh, left there, I put that in for my esteemed colleague, Dr. Mercer. I hope you had an opportunity to see that.
I did. I was lucky enough to get to the person.
We had a dynamic duo day and the upper left is Bob Ross and his painting. And I thought that was an incredibly wonderful perspective to have on that sort of day. So, uh, hats off to them and kind of a running joke with Dr. Mercer now. And then of course, the lower left, uh, you have our homecoming court. That night at the football game, still smiling, still looking great after hours in the rain and hours in the cold. And I also want to give a huge thank you to Mrs. Reed and Mr. Schweitz for the wonderful job they do on homecoming. The work that goes into it is just phenomenal and they do it year in and year out and do it beautiful. And I also want to give a big kudos to the cool hand of our brand-new superintendent and assistant chief who were faced with an amazingly bad first parade day. And handled it extremely calm and with great post. And when we made the decision to move ahead, knowing that the weather wasn't going to be fantastic, uh, supported that because it truly was the best thing to do for our students. And that was, it was made for an interesting day. It was memories a lot of people won't forget. But overall, what I heard more than anything else, and I really heard this Saturday night at the dance was, they were so grateful that they didn't have that parade Saturday morning. Because the weather wasn't going to be much better, but it would have interfered with hair. It would have interfered with dinners. It would have interfered with pictures. It would have interfered with the dance. It would have interfered with so many things. So again, thank you to all those people that helped homecoming go off and was absolutely wonderful. Uh, finally, oh, it's not going to let me because I'm in as somebody else. So I was going to show you this video. This was the video that kicked off our homecoming. If you've been to a football game, you've probably seen it. It's the excellent work of Brooke Wyler. And one of the things that we're getting more and more into, and you heard Dr. Fleet allude to it earlier, is not only creating the videos, but this one I think is so neat because it captured really weeks and months of just following our pet assemblies and stuff with a GoPro and a camera and just starting to capture those memories and then put them into this sort of medium. We're doing more and more of this. And along the lines, I always usually give you guys some sort of teaser at the end of mine. So my teaser this time is, um, Dr. Boyd and I have a video that we're working on in regards to staff. It's actually going to be a whole series of them. And so we hope by Christmas that we're able to premiere the first one for you guys. So that said, I apologize to this video, but in the sake of time, we're actually in as Ms. Beazell and she doesn't have permission to view because, you know, what? It took me longer to log in than it will show the video. It's like, I'll have to hear about it from you at the next minute meeting about how I took so long. Thank you.
I was just going to share next month for the children program representation, we have the high school family and consumer sciences. So Dr. Ederton. All right.
Next, new business, are there, is now here, is, uh, we're moving on to Ms. Beazell.
I moved to the Board of Education, holding a closed meeting with a closed record and told GOAT, following a regular open meeting on November twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, to be held in the R.W. Thomas Library, seven fifteen Washington Street. St. Genevieve Missouri returns to discussing and voting upon the following items for this. Legal action, causes of action or litigation, lease, purchase or sale of real estate, hiring, firing, disbanding or promoting particular employees, proceedings involving the mental or physical health of identifiable individuals, scholastic probation, expulsion or graduation of identifiable individuals, testing and examination materials, welfare cases of identifiable individuals, preparation to negotiate with employee groups, software codes for electronic data processing and documentation thereof, specification or competitive bidding until approved or published, sealed bids approved or published, sealed bids and related documents that the bids are open, sealed proposals and related documents until all proposals are rejected, or any documents related to negotiate a contract until the contract is executed, indivisible identifiable personnel records, performance ratings or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, records protected from disclosure by law, scientific and technological innovation to which the owner has proprietary interest, records relating to municipal hotlines established for reporting abuse and wrongdoing, confidential privileged communication with an auditor, operational guidelines, policies and specific response plans for preventing or responding to a critical incident, existing or proposed security systems and structural plans of district property, a portion of records that identify security systems or access codes, records that identify and will allow unauthorized access to or unlawful disruption or configuration of components or the operation of computer, computer system, computer network or telecommunications network, credit card numbers, personal identification numbers, digital certificates, physical, virtual keys, access codes or authorization codes are used to protect electronic transactions. I further move the notice of this meeting and this tentative agenda being posted as required by law.
Sir?
Eric.
I'll put you both.
Rocco, Eric, Bobber.
Yes.
Dave Boba.
Yes.
Don Hoag.
Yes.
Jim Kirchner. Eric McGinn, yes. Martha Reesinger. Ray Ruda.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven oh.
Move to the closed, such a closed record and closed vote after short break.
Thank you.
A motion in the second, I hope everybody's seeing that.
Aye.
Thank you, Austin, Charlie.